The ordinance and legislation will now come to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
That's Deion.
Here.
Counsel Deion. Counsel Repose. Counsel Washington.
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. I should say acknowledged and permissible. First item on the agenda is citizen input. Is there any citizen input? Seeing none. Item number two are minutes from the May 3, 2022 meeting.
Motion to approve and place on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Deion, second by Counsel Washington. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries. Item number three are minutes from May 17, 2022.
Motion to approve and place on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Deion, second by Counsel Washington. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries. Item number four are proposed traffic handicap parking changes for 530 Bank Street, 160 Buffington Street, 144 Crawford Street, 144 Forest Street, 26 Oliver Street, 26 Pear Street, 3A7 Sprague, and 394 Buffington.
Motion to approve.
Is there a handicap for emergency preamble?
Yes.
Motion for emergency preamble on the handicap was made by Counsel Deion.
Second.
Second by Counsel Washington. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries. Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Deion, seconded by Counsel Washington. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries. Item number five, proposed ordinance for traffic miscellaneous. This was referred to the committee on May 24, June 28, and then July 12 for first reading.
Motion to separate Atlantic Boulevard and Crescent Street.
Motion was made by Counsel Deion. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries. Counsel Deion?
Yes, Atlantic Boulevard, this started almost a year ago. It's taken almost a year to get it here. The Traffic Board had multiple meetings, and I will defer to Mrs. Pereira in case I say anything that's inaccurate. Feel free to correct me. This has been before the Traffic Board on more than one occasion. Sergeant Dolan is the one who determined Atlantic Boulevard was too narrow to have parking on both sides, so even for safety reasons and for emergency vehicles, wanted no parking on the west side of the street. So I would like to make a motion that this be through by emergency preamble and put through all readings.
Motion for emergency preamble was made by Counsel Deion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Washington. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously. Motion to pass through all readings made by Counsel Deion, seconded by Counsel Washington. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion for the prohibiting parking on Crescent Street, east side, south of Bluff Street for a distance of 74 feet southerly?
Motion to adopt. Is there other any issues?
No. If I may, you separated Atlantic Boulevard out, you could just do the rest of it altogether? Or you could do one more?
Okay. Motion to put the remaining streets together.
Motion was made by Counsel Deion.
Second.
Second by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Deion.
Second.
Second by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Yep.
Yes.
I was covering Sections 1, 2, and 3.
1, 2, and 3.
Item number six is a resolution, discuss taxi cab rates and possible cap on the number of medallions issued. This was adopted on June 14, 2022. This is the resolution that was submitted by Counsel Palteer and Counsel Pereira. Whereas the increasing cost of gasoline and diesel is causing a great hardship on many businesses, and whereas the number of taxi cab medallions available should have a cap, and whereas local taxi cab companies have not increased fares in many years, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation convened with taxi cab companies to discuss rates, a possible cap on the number of medallions available, and the possibility of waiving the fee for resealing meters for this one-time increase. So I'll invite some folks down to the table, the taxi cab companies. Counsel Palteer, if you want to come down.
Sorry, Mr. Two.
Wherever you like. Well, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
My home address?
Yes.
Faithletessa 119 Wyella Road in Swansea.
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules was made by Counsel Deion.
Second.
Second by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries.
Leo Escapalitea, City Council. Just in case you forgot me.
Haven't forgotten you.
I appreciate you bringing this up tonight. It's been long overdue that we try to help people here. Freddie's been around for 30 years. He's here tonight. He won't be coming to the table when he's here tonight, and the support that he would give us. And, you know, this guy worked hard in the city of Fall River, still does. And he's been in front of Mr. Hathaway three, four times for different places that he would like to bring the business to. And they went through the zoning. Everyone got shot down. And there's one particular place that had a bunch of names, but nobody wants it. They don't want it in the neighborhood, nothing. I mean, you know, he gives a service to the city of Fall River, and it's like, you don't get nothing for it. I can't do this, I can't do that. Right now, you've got the tower, they just moved, a brand-new tower. He's on the old tower, they won't put him on. So he's got no tower for communication, nothing. Where's he go from there? You know? And like I said, he's here tonight, and it's a whole bunch of things, but the first thing is the drop-off fee. The last fee, if you know or don't know, was January 3, 2017. It's $3. They call it Honda Drop. It's $3. Well, you know, he's had it, he's pretty well, you know, between the rent that he pays and the people who work there, and the parts that he pays, and the motors, and the windows that are broken, and the help and all that stuff, he just, things are tight. I wouldn't want to see him out of the city of Fall River. We got two companies that do business here. The other company, Fall River Cab, Fall River Cab Service, he's lucky, he's got a contract with Gotra, and he brings people to the drug houses and everything else, which is all right. And he had an opportunity, the guy sold the business, for $750,000. That's good. I don't think Freddie could get any kind of money for his because of what's happening, you know? We talk about the caps. The caps, we should cap it. There's other things that are cap here in the city of Fall River. You cap it to 50. 50. You raise the price up from 60 to 100. Now, they can take, both companies can take 25 apiece, 25 apiece, and they can keep that at the end of the year, you renew it, it's your medal. So it's yours. But again, if you've got someone that wants to open a little business, they can go with his medallion, doing business as such and such, and, you know, he would get a little bit for doing that, recoup some of his money. So I would like to see a cap on it. Like, we have a cap on liquor stores, we have a cap on the bar rooms and all that stuff, all well and good. I certainly tried to put a cap on marijuana, but it just didn't work, but we don't know. But that is besides the point. I don't know if there's any interest to cap it, but, you know, it would make his company a lot stronger if you do. And let's say, what do you got, 13 cars on, 14 cars on? All right, so she's got 25 medallions, and they say, oh, we need two more. They wouldn't have to come in front of the council, I need two more, and it's going to take two months. She's got them. But the other thing is, insurance is about $9,000 per car. So you take the medallions, and you need to put two extra cars on. So they put two extra cars because they got a fee, they got this, ba-ba-ba, the whole bit. So now, you put it on, and you tell the insurance, okay, you're going to charge me. Now you don't need them no more. So you're going to save money. You ain't going to pay the $9,000, you're going to pay for two months instead of paying the whole $9,000. They need something to keep themselves going, you know? He's got the place up there, he don't like it, and he just needs another place. He can't find nothing, nobody's helping him out, nothing. Nobody wants him in the neighborhood. And then, you know, I get calls, you know, I try to get a cab, and it takes too long, this and that, and you say, well, I just keep trying. But there's only so many people. Because the other thing, you can't get labor. So this dollar, I guess, half would go, it's got to go to the drivers, and half to him. But what is 50 cents? That's nothing. You know, I worked there, I worked there 5 to 6, and I end up making $120, and then I got to, I had to pay for the gas, it cost me $32 with the time. Now, you know what it costs for gas and everything else. It's the gas, the insurance, the mechanic, it's everything. It's awful. Nobody seems to want to help this guy or the company. He's part of Fall River for 30 years, 32 years, you know? I mean, let's do something for the guy. I don't want to see him close. I want to see him get what he deserves. And if you got the medallions, and you decide, well, I'm going to sell it the whole bit. Well, you can sell the whole business, you've got the medallion, as long as it goes to the next guy who's got it. So he's got something to bargain with. But, you know, if the city owns a medallion, you buy it for the year, and then you come back, you get it for the other year, and it's yours. You've got something to sell. That's part of it as well. So I'm hoping, I know we're kind of short on help here tonight, but...
You got the good ones.
Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to put this on the table so everybody knows what's going on and what's happening. And you're going to, a lot of more people move into Fall River, and, you know, a lot of them really don't have cars, and they got to go shopping and all this stuff. But it's pretty tough. I mean, I call the shop, and the line's busy, the line's busy. It's either they don't have the help to send the cab out, and they're holding back a little bit. So that's part of the problem. But that would help them a lot in two ways. Like I said, you know, you want to put one on, oh, we need two more for the next, two months, school is going back, I think we're going to need them and all that. It's just, all right, here's the medallion, boom, boom. Okay, car 32, we'll put the medallion, car 42, Palteer's driving, and make car 54. So where are you, car 54? You know? So that's what it's all about. So, you know, we're looking for a little relief, a little help here. Attorney Mitchell was going to be here tonight. He had another meeting, a very important meeting, but he says, why don't you go without me? I says, okay. And Fred and Mrs. Fay here, I says, okay. And at least I try to open it up so people can understand what they need, and when Mr. Mitchell comes back, we can maybe work something out. I don't know what the administration thinks about it. All I heard, that maybe a dollar is too much. A dollar is too much. How about the taxes in Fall River? How about the water rate in Fall River? I'm not worried about a dollar. People want a cab, they're going to pay the extra dollar, because they're going to have to walk. But we're trying to keep the service here at a right price, and again, the cap, the cap is needed as well. With that, I yield.
Okay. Would you like to say something, or? If Leo said it, that's fine.
Yeah, he's pretty much said it. Like, we work hard to keep working in the city. And with Uber and Lyft coming in, that really hurt us a lot. But we, I believe, we have a pretty reputable company.
Yep.
And I've got good accounts, and we work hard to keep the cars, you know, up nice and serviced to people. And every time we ask for something, it's no. And if we take a car off for a couple of months or something, and to put it back on, we're going to come back here, go in front of the city council to put that car back on the road, and pay another $60 for that medallion, only because we had changed the plate on it, the registration plate.
Okay.
So if we do that three times a year to the same car, you know, it adds up.
Right.
So we're just looking for some relief somewhere and some, maybe some respect.
Okay. I appreciate that. Counsel Deion?
I'm going to start off with, I need some clarification. I own my own vehicle. Not that I, no, I don't think I've ever used a cab, to be honest with you, in Fall River. So I'm pretty ignorant to some of what you're talking about. So my first question is, I know that originally we had Vets Cab and Yellow Cab. What do we have today, and who owns which one? That's my first question.
For who owns the Fall River cab service? That's been so, about two years ago, I thought.
I know we have Fall River Taxi, and we have, I don't know what, but I don't know who's who.
There's only two.
Yeah, there's no Vets Cab anymore.
Right, there's no Vets. Vets became what?
Fall River Taxi.
Their Fall River Taxi.
Yeah.
Yellow Cab is your?
No.
We bought out Yellow Cab. Town Transportation bought out Yellow Cab.
So Town Taxi used to be yellow.
Yes.
Fall River Taxi used to be Vets.
Right.
Okay, so at least we have that established. That's my starting point. So how many, do both cab companies have the same number of medallions? And explain to me a little bit of what, exactly what one medallion means to you, and what you're capped at now.
Yeah, because it's like...
Well, one medallion puts one car on the road.
Okay.
That's one medallion.
And the cap now is what?
There's no cabs.
There is no cab.
No cab. You could have 100 people come in, I want a medallion. I don't even know if they have to prove that they have a garage or whatever. I don't know. I mean, to open a cab company, you've got to have a place that you send the messages out and all that stuff.
Okay.
And you need that, and...
So when you speak of capping medallions, are you suggesting that if a cab company has 20 cars, they have 20 medallions, one assigned to each vehicle?
Yep.
That they can take it off the road, put it back on the road as needed? Is that what you're, is basically, is that what you're asking for?
Well, that's part of it, yeah. You've got 20 medallions, he could shut one down, and I believe that could let him know, look, we're taking this medallion from 30, and we're going to put it on 32 because this car is going to come off the road because it needs a motor. I mean, they would agree with that. To have extra ones sitting there for $100 a year is like an insurance, that you don't have to come running back to the city and say, listen, I got to have another medallion, it's there, if you want it, it's there. But they're paying for it, too.
Mm-hmm.
They're paying the $100, but it's there if you need it.
And it directly affects your insurance rate every time you take a vehicle off the road and put one back on?
Oh, yeah.
You have to pay full insurance?
Well, they give you a bill upfront.
Yes.
But not for the whole thing.
Well, you can make payments.
Yeah.
But just on the cap, though, you're also looking to cap the number of medallions that the city would issue, right? So let's just, and I'm going to throw out another one.
Yeah, we're caping.
So you're saying, just let's just say it's 50 medallions.
Yeah, 50.
So that the city would only issue 50. You've currently got 25, that would allow 25 to another company.
Yeah. They're looking to kind of split 25 and 25 apiece. I don't think we have, have more than 15 medallions out.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, now, am I also understanding that the other cab company has contracts, which kind of put them ahead of you, so to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
They have contracts, real good contracts, I believe.
Yeah, with Gotra, which pays...
And they do the same service they do, but they got a lot of work, bringing people, depends on the medicine to take care of their habits. They'll pick them up the house, they'll drop them to the place, they get the medicine, and they take them home again.
Now, did you not have the opportunity to get those contracts? How does that work? And are there any contracts that you could, if this, you know, if we were to make changes and do the extra medallions, et cetera, and split it evenly, would that allow you to be able to try to go out and get contracts that you don't have now?
Yes. Just like yesterday, Swansea Surgery Center called me and asked me if I would do a contract with them. And already in two days, they've given me 10 jobs. So I got a feeling that one's going to take off.
So without having the medallions that you can, I don't want to call it play back and forth, but...
She could start immediately. She could start right away.
She could start right away.
Put it on the car, get the insurance, that's it. Call somebody up here, whatever. Here's what we're doing, okay?
And that would enhance your business tremendously, obviously. Now, in terms of this tower for communications, explain...
Well, I don't know if Mr. Brumsey or anybody else knows about the tower and what happened up there, but there was a tower that was put up by the, I mean, Boston Police Chief Union in the reservation.
Can you hear my...
Oh, I'm sorry. And they got to knock the other one down. And Freddie was on the other one. And they opened it a couple of days ago. Freddie's off it. So Freddie's going to have to do something. What is he doing now for...
We have no radios, no communication with our drivers. And we're very nervous that if something happens out there, they get robbed or in a car accident, we have no communication with them. The only thing they can do is call the office. Usually, we have a two-way radio. Last Wednesday, we lost all that. We had to call in a radio man, he's trying to build something for us, and we're going to be with him tomorrow and hopefully get radio communication.
So essentially, you just got cut from any radio frequencies?
Yes.
How can that be?
Well, they owned the radio tower, so I think they were allowing you to use their frequency.
Right, we paid rent on that tower.
Yeah.
And the new one didn't offer...
Well, the thing is, they worried that if the applicant, like them or someone else, comes in, that that particular thing could mess up the new spot. So they would have to look at it, investigate it, check it out, and say, yeah, it's okay to put it up there. Meanwhile, they got nothing, nothing at all. So, you know, that's another thing that just happened two days ago. You know, it just keeps going and going to the point you say, hey, what am I doing? Banging my head? I might as well go to Florida and retire.
With that, I yield, I know you have questions.
Counsel Deion, I mean, Washington, sorry.
So Uber and Lyft, they don't have to have medallions, they can have an unlimited number?
Yeah, they do what they want.
Wow, how is that? What is the reasoning behind that? Because is there a difference between a cab company and then a transportation company? Because there's probably 100 Uber drivers in the city, minimum.
I think it's very unfair when Uber comes in and do what they want, they don't need a medallion, they can pick up this one, this one, and that's it. That's it, they do what they want.
They might work three hours here, and head over to Providence, and go work in Providence for a few hours, go head somewhere else and work over, they move all over the place.
So you want to limit the number of medallions in the city, but that has nothing to do with the other transportation companies, it's just between these two companies?
We feel that there's like the competition with Uber and Lyft, and then you get these people that come in, oh, can I get two medallions? And here we are, you know, we've been here so long, and everybody is going to get a medallion and just do what they want.
So that's interesting. So somebody can just come and say, I would like a medallion, I'm going to put two things on my car. It doesn't have to be a... What establishes, I guess, a taxi cab company? So are there regulations that establish that? Or can, you know, my retired father come and request two medallions from...
They have to be lettered properly, and have to go through the police station, the police station has to look at them and pass through them. They have to put the meter in, and go to wait and measures, and have the meter looked at.
How often does that happen?
She has to do our meters once a year, but if we put a car on, she has to come out and do that car.
So each medallion costs how much?
It's $60 for a medallion.
For a year?
Yes.
$60 per year?
But if we took that car off the road and wanted to put another car on, we'd have to pay another $60 to transfer it to another vehicle.
Yeah.
Or if we took it off the road, just like the pandemic, we had to park eight cars because everything shut down. So we parked them somewhere, and to put them cars back on, we had to pay $60 apiece to put them back on.
And that's just, I just can see how difficult that is to do business, when you have big conglomerates like Uber and Lyft, like, coming in. So however we can make that as easy, that makes sense. And are you asking for that $60 to increase or decrease?
To 100, yeah.
You want it to go to 100. What's the...
Well, they agreed that 100 would be a better price.
It would cover the cost of the medallion, so if I took a car off three times a year, that's $120 anyway, but it would...
You get it back, is that what you're saying?
Well, we paid the $100 for the medallion, and we have it for the year.
Okay.
To point of information, so in other words, they'd just be able to swap it out. If this car breaks down, they take it off, they put it on the other one, and don't have to pay 60 again. It's 100 for the year, and that medallion can go from car to car.
Comes off to $5,000 a year.
Yeah, okay.
But they've got it for the whole year, and if they pick it up at a certain time, they have it for the whole year again. It's like the bars.
That actually makes sense.
They've got to go there and pick it up, to us, and make it sell it.
I think that's so reasonable, yeah. But so then, going back to, so that makes sense. But then going back to the tower thing, were you paying rent on that other radio tower?
Yes.
You were paying rent. And why did they stop your rent? I just needed more clarification.
We don't know, it just stopped.
So they stopped taking your money, or did they say...
No, we were still paying it. And all of a sudden, it just gone. And we called our radio guy.
Yep.
And he gave us some kind of crazy story, that he was going to look into it, but we haven't heard from him, so we had to go get another radio guy.
So who owns the tower? Is it privately owned, or does the city own it? Who owns it?
The new tower, they told me, comes out of Boston Police Chief Organization that got the money to put the tower there. And what Mr. Ferland done, to let him put it up there, they gave him 75 feet, I think, of land, always, to put the tower there. And when it's all set and all done, they're going to turn it over to the city of Fall River.
Okay.
And I guess if Boston's involved, I'm sure that they need the service as well out there with the state police and everything else. Though this covers quite a bit of things. But as far as her being off the tower, it's because they would have to check to make sure whatever she's doing will not interfere with the police and fire department or the state police. I don't know if you get notified on it.
Yeah, notification.
But cold turkey, hey, you're off. Cold turkey, where are we going now? This is not right.
It's not a happy scene.
Yeah. I yield.
Counsel Deion?
Yeah, I suggest, just on some random knowledge that I have from many years back, my stepfather owned a communications company, and you actually own X number of miles of airspace, and nobody can take up any of your airspace. So I don't know, I'm going to guess, that whoever owned that tower decided they wanted to sell their airspace, got a very nice price for their airspace, so now Boston moved this way. So that's what I'm thinking, and they wouldn't necessarily ask or care about any little guy that's going to get hurt, because they're benefiting and they're utilizing... because they're benefiting and they're utilizing that airspace, obviously, for, because i- i- it serves them, which is nothing wrong with that. It's unfortunate, though, that, yes, you may have gotten, uh, nixed because of it.
If I may, the old tower was owned by, had that company. And they didn't pay the taxes. I'm, I heard they didn't pay the taxes. And it took, they put a fence around it, and they built a new one. That's where it stands, so she's in the middle.
Can we get any clarification on this?
We can. I thi- I think it's a it's a private entity right now, so I don't I don't know that we would have control, and I think.
But if the city took it for them not paying taxes, did the city sell? How did it change hands because of them not paying taxes?
Well, they must have got the land, and Boston thought about it, and they said, maybe we'll book one up there, a newer one.
Yeah, I I mean, we can get clarification, but I I think the, I don't think the the radio tower is city property.
Well, Mr. Ferlin says it's a sign of water.
It may be, it may be leased, but I don't I don't know that the tower is is owned and controlled by the city, I guess is where I'm where I'm going with.
They say they're gonna give us the whole thing after it's all set up and done.
So Seth, can we just get clarification on that?
Yeah, there's definitely some background we need and some, I mean.
I I, there's there's a lot that goes into building new towers, and then you gotta look at,
Yeah.
lights, uh, sight sight lines, and then when you stop putting additional equipment on there, you get interference with frequencies, so I I know there's, they're not, they're not cheap, so.
I talked to Mr. Hathaway today, and he is getting ready to get the right permits to knock the other one down. So that's why I got so many information.
Okay.
With that, I yield.
So if I could, if I could just, I guess, so I see three, three major topics that we we want to discuss. Number one, if we want to limit the number of medallions, um, which obviously would impact if there's any other companies coming in to to look at the medallions. In incorporated in that would be whether or not we want to allow them to be able to just sit on the medallions uh, in order to to allow them to transfer between vehicles as they go down. The other piece is the cost associated with it, which I think is the benefit of, you know, going from sixty to a hundred dollars, uh, because we will have a cap, so there's limited, uh, medallions out there, which I think, um, obviously there creates more value for the taxi companies as they hold that, similar to to a liquor store that has, you know, they've they've got inventory, but the the real piece is is the liquor license itself. So, um, I guess we would need to make sure that it's transferable. So it's almost like there there's ownership in the license, so I, we would have to talk to, uh, Corporation Council and the administration and see what they they sit on with that and whether or not we can, we can have the medallions be similar to a liquor license, uh, where it's there and then, uh, potentially transferable with a sale. Because I think that's where you only get the the value of medallions. And then the third one, which I don't, I don't think we really, uh, touched upon, was, um, having weights and measures come out to to really kind of, uh, measure the the meters themselves, right? So there's a little bit more of concern. So every time they come out, it's it's an additional cost. Are you looking to streamline that? Is that, that's what we, is that what you meant by resaling the meters?
Well, if, uh, if they put a new one in a brand-new car, they gotta come down.
Right.
And seal it. She would have to, because of the rate increase, gotta do every single one of them. This is twenty-five bucks, twenty-five bucks. At first, as well, you know, maybe they should take take the cost. They're willing, say, look, we'll pay the whole thing. So if you gotta know when they come out, they check it, they seal it, that's it. It's good for the rest of the year. They come every year?
Yes.
Yeah, they come every year. So any little change, they're gonna seal it.
Okay.
I- i- if I may, uh, I understand Mr. Mr. Alan Rumsay has checked some of these things out, whether, I'll be putting them on the spot, if you wanna speak up about it a little bit tonight, or if you'd rather wait for their lawyer, because I'm not a lawyer, but if he can give us a little clarification.
Can you, can you just come down just for the mics? Thank you.
I'm just wondering, what is the position of the city? In your department, working for the administration, whether you think a cap is good or not good?
Well, I haven't been asked to look at that at all.
Okay. I got the wrong information?
No, I mean, I sat in on a meeting with the the three of you, um, so I'm aware of the issue, but I haven't been asked to look at any legal issues whatsoever. So I I can't speak for whether the administration is for or against, uh, the proposals. And there's not a legal issue that I'm aware of.
All right, well, basically, I wanted to set it, and you know it, you heard it here tonight. And, uh, if I have to call the mayor tomorrow, he'll know about it anyway, that, uh, maybe he can decide what he wants to do for the city.
So I guess my recommendation would be then to table this matter and just, uh, refer it back to the administration, just to kind of get some input. Number one, um, can we treat the medallions similar to a liquor license where, you know, it is transferable? Or is it something that automatically reverts back to the city council? Uh, because if it does, I guess, revert back to the city council, it doesn't really do what you're intending it to do. Um, so it doesn't create additional value for your company. And then the other piece is, um, what the process is for the, uh, sealers of weights and measures to go out there, and if there's a way to streamline that process for the two taxi companies that we have. Um, and then I would like to get, I guess, some feedback on, uh, from the administration as to whether sixty dollars to a hundred dollars makes sense. Is it, is it more, is it less? Uh, where we stand with the the fee in terms of, uh, generating that, that would obviously, you know, meet the the requirement of a fee, that we're not just generating additional monies, that there are some costs associated with the, uh, the fee projections, so.
As far as the girl that's doing the weights and measures, they're very happy with her. Very on the ball, come in, don't let her wait. And the other guy, well, when he felt like coming, he was coming, if not, so they're pretty well happy with her, so. Which is a good thing. At least somebody's, you know, paying attention, coming out and taking care of the business.
Right.
That's all I'm looking for.
Yeah.
It's not for me, it's for them and the people.
It's good. I'm I'm glad they're doing their job, because I want to make sure if somebody's driving a mile on a taxi, it's not a mile and a half, you know, so.
Absolutely.
Oh, charge for a mile and drive a half a mile.
Right, right, so. Um, okay, so what's the, uh, committee's desire?
Um, I would say we would table and send it to the, uh, administration for more information.
Okay, is that a motion?
That would be my motion.
Motion, bu- motion co- uh, made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Washington. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
All right, can we send something to the mayor to, to transpire tonight?
Thank you, yeah, we'll, we got that, right? And I'll, I'll follow up with them.
Okay.
And we'll get on for our next meeting, too, so we, we're not kicking it around.
Yeah? Okay, that's good.
Okay.
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
Winter's coming.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I thank you very much, the committee. Mr. Rumsay, thank you for coming down. Have a nice evening.
Okay, that's fine. Item number seven is a resolution to discuss unregistered motorbikes traveling on city streets. That was tabled on May third, uh, two thousand twenty-two. I need a motion to lift from the table.
Motion to lift from the table?
Motion was made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote, motion carries. I'll ask the administration to come down. Good evening. Uh, what I will say is, I I did talk to, uh, Chief Gov, and he is, um, somewhat under the weather. And I know he was recovering from COVID, but he still had a little bit of a cough that came back, so he said he would be available if we needed him. I, uh, I gave him the blessing to to not come and, uh, yeah, share his, uh, his cough with us, so. I'll turn it over to, if there's any councils that want to speak, or, um, turn it over to either Seth or Alan to really, if you want to just give us an update on where we stand.
I'll give you an update. If it makes sense, I think, for me to give you an update. Uh, last time we here, we discussed a number of potential ordinances for ATVs. I've looked at this at length, both, you know, different states, um, different municipalities. In a nutshell, um, you know, there's chapter ninety-B, there's, uh, there's a state law as to recreational vehicles, ATVs, recreational vehicles. I'll use them, uh, synonymously. In essence, what I've found is that Massachusetts arguably has the strictest ATV laws in the entire country, um, both for what they're allowed to do and also the harshest penalties. Um, for example, you are not allowed to operate an ATV on a public way in Fall River. You have to have a helmet. Whether you're fourteen or sixteen, there's additional rules. It has to be registered. So, um, this, what, this is kind of a long way of basically saying that there are already state statutes in place that make illegal almost all of the acts that, uh, the community has a problem with right now. So there's an issue of whether or not we are even permitted to have, uh, additional ordinances to somehow strengthen what are already extremely strong state statutes. You know, to be valid, the local ordinance would, can't be inconsistent with state law. It can't be an unconstitutional taking, and it can't be, it has to have at least some specificity. It can't be unconsciously vague. So, um, and I've had numerous conversations with the chief of police. And, you know, it's my suggestion that, um, the the state statutes that are already in the books are strong enough to, it already prevents everything that we're complaining about. And I think we're best just to, uh, enforce the stat, the the laws that are already on the books.
Counselor Dion.
So I guess my question would be, we have the laws, we have the teeth, how do we curb the activity? Um, we know that, you know, you can't take chase, and I understand that. You don't want to put other people at risk, uh, you don't want anybody dying, but how do we curb the activity? How do we, um, stop the progression of this? I mean, it, it's not a good situation. I mean, you know, people have been hurt. There have been, uh, I mean, what do we do?
Well, I know the chief of police has some ideas and some plans on how to, um, apprehend people who are violating violating the existing law. Um, so, you know, we're not suggesting that it's impossible to catch these people. You know, that's, that's not really what the purpose of the ordinance is. I mean, what we're trying to do, you know, how to be curb it. And, you know, most of the suggestions are just stronger laws than it's already in the books, right? I'll give you the one example that's probably different. You know, there was one suggestion about maybe Brucon or gas stations to not fill up a gas tank unless they see the ATV with a trailer. And, you know, I'm not saying this is black and white, but there is an argument to be made that that would be an unconstitutional taking from a gas station. You're now putting this burden on them to help enforce a law that our police are having difficulty enforcing. You know, that they are going to have to now be the the eyes and ears for the community, checking to make sure that, you know, that the the vehicle is registered, which it has to be, that there's some kind of a trailer, because it's not allowed to operate on a public way. You know, it's, I'm not suggesting this is black and white, it it's, but some communities, well, there's not that many ordinance out there in other communities in Massachusetts. I think the reason why is, this argument's been made before, you know, are these ordinances valid? There is one community in Massachusetts that has a special act. And I think that that, if we really feel the need to have laws that are, in many cases, uh, you know, unnecessary, because there's already stolen laws in the book, but a special act, at least you get the Attorney General's office coming in and blessing it. And that takes away the ambiguity of whether or not the ordinances are valid.
I have one question on that. So based on that logic, that we're depriving somebody, um, of a sale, so if I follow that same logic, if I have an unregistered vehicle, a car in my yard with no plates on it, and I decide to drive it up the hill and go to the gas station and pull in to get gas, um, we're depriving that gas station of selling, um, gas to a vehicle who shouldn't be in their parking lot to begin with? I don't understand that logic.
I'm not sure I understand that question. I think it's more akin to, are we gonna have our, 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 uh?
I don't think it's a matter of policing from my perspective. It's a matter of the illegal vehicle shouldn't be on their property to begin with. Let's say that that vehicle pulls in and runs over a customer. Who's gonna be liable for it? Certainly not the person who did it. They're not insured. They're gonna take off. Who's liable now? I don't know. Stranger things have happened, and very often, the person who shouldn't be responsible or liable becomes liable.
The the issue is 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 clear.
I mean, I get they can't be the police. I understand that.
Well, then, we're kind of asking them by enacting this, I mean, there's an argument to be made. I'm not saying I will, but there are, there's an argument made that you're asking gas stations to assist the police, and then you're gonna find the gas station for failure to assist the police.
Okay, so let me carry it. Maybe you'll say this is a little bit extreme, but let me carry it to this level. There are legal gas cans and illegal gas cans. There are gas cans, there are, you can't take a Clorox bottle and go up to the gas station and fill it with gas. If you do that, the gas station will tell you, that's not a legal container. You cannot put gas in there, and I will not put gas in there. What's the difference?
I think there's a difference. I mean, it's, it's. Question I have is, assuming this is a gray area, of whether or not it's even a valid ordinance, is it gonna have any real effect in the city of Fall River? And my personal opinion is it won't. I think that the problem fortunately hasn't been as bad in Fall River as in many other communities. I think that, uh, our police department is developing different ways to handle it, to, uh, arrest the people. And once they're arrested, you know, understand, you know, the the ATV won't be returned until there's proof of ownership. Because a lot of times, he's saying, these, these vehicles are stolen vehicles, apparently. Uh, they have to have proof of registration, and then they're gonna have to, you know, the police won't give it back unless there's a trailer or some way that they can, you know, prove to the police it won't be used on a public way to get to where it needs to go. So, I mean, all these things, it's just a long way of saying, the state law is extremely strict, and I I think if we were to enact anything that is arguably infringing upon state law, the best way to go would be a special act. And, you know, I don't think we've had any real trouble enforcing what's out there. The the trouble we've had is apprehending the suspects. And, you know, I'm not sure that enacting a potentially invalid ordinance is gonna assist with apprehending the suspects.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor Washington.
Has there been any looking into of giving these bikes a place to ride legally? So like, you know, in New Hampshire, these people take their ETVs, so Fall River people take their ETVs up to like New Hampshire or, you know, the Berkshires, and they have a place to ride.
They should do. They do. In fact, in in fact, in Fall River, if you go in the reservation area, I don't know exactly what it's called, but I've ridden my bike to there numerous times. There's a parking lot, and they are packed with people who use it.
So here's the difference, right, but there, you can only have two wheels in the reservation. You can't have four wheels down in the reservation. It's it's very strict on what you can ride in the reservation. So my thought is that if we give a place for these bikes to ride, and then we are encouraging the use of that, um, property, maybe we can deter that. And then, you know, if there's so-and-so, um, you know, riding his four-wheeler down the, um, avenue, and we can't chase him, but, you know, officer so-and-so sees them, maybe he's gonna catch him up at the reservation. I just, there are, so I think there are a lot of dirt bikes that go up on the reservation, but it is limited to what they can drive. So when you see a lot of four-wheelers, and I don't think, so if that could be looked into on what is allowed to be in the reservation, because I think if these people, we can expand that a little bit, and we give them more space to ride and more access. I know there's, um, it has to do with conservation, and two tires are better than four tires, but, I mean, if we can havoc throughout our city, if we give these people a place to ride their bikes and a place to congregate, maybe that could curb it. I'm not a big fan of always arresting people out of the situation if there's another solution, but, I mean, by all means, I, listen, it's been a nightmare. I've, you know, been in, driving, and they're like going in front of me. So, but I think that that should be considered and looked into as, you know, an alternative option, like the skate parks that we're doing and stuff like that. I yield, sorry.
Yeah, so so I I think, um, I think that's a great idea, but I I think I think the folks that we're focused on, uh, they're not gonna go to the,
They're not going to the rent.
The reservations. They're gonna still be doing wheelies up Plymouth Ave, running through red lights and trying to create havoc and and, you know, mocking the police because they know the police are not gonna chase them. So I I think that's really where we need to, you know, kind of try to figure out, does an ordinance, um, give the police department more tools in the tool belt, as we had mentioned before, to really kind of, um, address those issues? And if you're telling me that the state law already has, because I I think one of the questions was about, you know, once we get the vehicles, we want to put more restrictions on, you know, when we release it from either a junkyard or the police station, wherever, wherever they may be held. You had just mentioned, though, that you, um, you said that they would, before, when we release it, they have to show proof of ownership. They're gonna have to show proof of insurance and a trailer.
Registration.
Or registration.
And then a trailer. And, I mean, honestly, I'm not sure that any of the people that are doing the stunt riding around the city.
They're probably already stolen.
Probably stolen vehicle.
Okay, so so we already have that, because I think that was one of the bigger pieces of the ordinance that we had there. Um, you know, because, listen, the gas station, we can go back and forth and argue the gas station. So if the gas, you know, if the if the gas station's not gonna sell them gas, they're just gonna go get a legal, you know, container, and it's not gonna be a bleached container, but it's gonna be a legal container, and they're just gonna transport it. So that's not really gonna prevent them from doing what they're doing, so. You know, and I and I have, I I have the, uh, unique. So, you know, and I, and I have, I, I have the unique opportunity of working in a town, so I, I know the bylaws, once we approve a bylaw, it has to go to the AG for review, and that's a very lengthy review process. And they, and they often come back and will strike out things that they feel are either unconstitutional or even questionable. So, I appreciate, you know, Corporation Council's attempt to come back to make sure that everything we're, we're, we're doing is, is constitutional because we, we don't have that luxury of sending this up to the AG for an additional set of eyes to review this and say, okay, we think this will be upheld. We'll find out when there's a lawsuit, right? So, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're capturing everything that we possibly can. And if you're telling me that it's as strong as it possibly can, and the administration doesn't have anything you need to, to add into it that would be able to give the police department the tools, then I guess I would support that. But I, I just want to, I know this is a hot topic. I just don't wanna come back in, in six months and hear that we haven't addressed what we needed to address with the, you know, the motorcycles and dirt bikes and ATVs and all that.
It sounds like the mayor and the city council, the, the chief of police, I mean, everybody is in the same boat. Everybody wants to figure out a way to prevent it from happening. The problem is, most of the solutions are just stronger enforcement of laws that are already in the books. And, you know, I, I, as I said before, I think that the chief of police is developing some additional methods of apprehending the people. But once they're caught, I mean, it's, it will come to an end. It's gonna be very difficult for, you know, to prove ownership, to register it and get a trailer because the people that have that generally aren't the ones that are kind of weaving in and out of traffic and causing inducents.
Right, so in, in terms of, I guess, these ordinances that are on the books, so unregistered vehicles, can we amend the unregistered, unregistered vehicles to include unregistered ATVs in the amount of ATVs? Because I, I know we were talking about the number of ATVs or dirt bikes that you can have on a, a single property to begin with. That was part of the initial conversation. Is there, is there an ability to amend that to include ATVs?
I'm trying to remember. Let's see. Once again, you know, I would worry that that would be some kind of a taking. I mean, and I also don't think it's gonna have much effect, honestly. There, there are so many state laws against what's happening. It's just, I've at least, I think can convince the chief of police, let's at least try to enforce what we have, and then see if there's something missing. And as we try to enforce what we have, okay, this one little piece is the tool I need. This is the thing that's missing. But right now, I think there's, there hasn't necessarily been this concerted effort to try to just enforce what's out there.
Okay, so, so is it the administration's recommendation to grant leave to withdraw, allow the police department to go ahead and try to implement some additional strategies in terms of curbing, you know, what's currently taking place? And then if, if we need to come back and revisit the ordinance, then just resubmit?
Um, so, just, you know, I think it's important to note that Attorney Rumsey very ably presents the, the legal perspective, which is incredibly important. And, you know, you know, I've certainly had the experience of clients that don't listen to their lawyer, and it just never works out, so I try to listen to my lawyer. But from a policy standpoint, it's also important to note that the administration is far from throwing up its hands saying, well, it's nothing we can do, and we're just gonna rely on the existing laws. It's not that at all. In fact, I think the mayor is adamant that this is a huge problem, that there's places nearby where it's escalated even beyond where it is in Fall River, and we will not stand by if, you know, allow it to get to that point. Because you hear stories from Providence and other places of people, people being pulled from cars, and it's a nightmare. And if you don't live in a neighborhood where it's happening, you probably don't realize what a nightmare it really is. But you talk to the people and say, this is unbelievable. And I would agree with you that the majority of people that are doing it are not outdoor enthusiasts that would go to a, a place in the country to ride their ATVs if given the chance. The whole point is to ride it on the street and to do road tricks and that sort of thing. And that's a, a clear danger to the public. So that said, acknowledging that from a legal standpoint, anything that we would do is essentially already being done by state statute. We do believe that where we need to look for solutions is in penalty. If there are, if there is a way that we can, and this is something we're still, you know, looking at, if there's a way that we can either through sort of a minimum housing type standard, a sanitation standard, ensure that a bunch of unregistered motorbikes is, is just as problematic as a bunch of unregistered cars. I think there's a good argument for that. It's not clear, but it's, there's a reasonable argument to be made there. And the question of, you know, is it, is it a reasonable jump to say that a gas station attendant who monitors the sale of cigarettes and the sale of other things that are, that are controlled, should also monitor the sale of gas to an unregistered bike? Where it's a vehicle, I think it does turn into a different thing. Where it's not regulated by state statute already, the use and purchase of, of that, I think it's a different thing, but it's, it's something we're not just gonna abandon because it, it needs further careful consideration. But I do think Attorney Rumsey's conclusion at this point is, is correct. All that by way of saying that, that brings us to the place of tools for enforcement. Obviously, we shouldn't talk in public about what the actual strategies are for police enforcement of this type of thing. But there are technologies and there are strategies that can be used. And the administration is committed to giving the police whatever they need in order to track and catch and apprehend these people and take their vehicles. If that's what's appropriate, because this is, this is a dangerous thing. And so the, it's the enforcement and investigation piece that we're prepared to invest in.
So all that is...
My short answer is yes. I think it would be, uh, if it draws appropriate, we've had a...
That, that's the legal. I was just trying to get the administration, are, are we, are we good with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience. There was just a lot there. I really need to get some things off my chest.
No, I, I appreciate that, because I, I think there are, there are folks that are really paying attention to this issue, and, and we need to explain why we're doing what we're doing. Because if not, they'll, they'll run away with just a snippet saying that we're not doing anything with bikes, which is not the case, right?
I think that's why I needed to explain that. I wanted to...
I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page in terms of, you know, doing the grant leave to withdraw. And if, if there is something that the administration feels like we can change any type of ordinance, if there's something currently on the book, then you, you folks will bring it back before us and we'll...
Certainly.
And we'll do that. And then obviously, if there's anything from an enforcement standpoint that we're not gonna talk about here, obviously, for safety reasons, then just let us know if it's a funding mechanism or if the case may be, so. With that, is there a motion, grant leave to withdraw? Motion was made by Councilor Washington. Seconded by Councilor Deion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously.
Item number eight is the proposed ordinance for reorganization of city departments tabled on May 17th, 2022.
Motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift of the table was made by Councilor Deion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted, motion carries unanimously.
So, when we were last here in May, the request of the committee was to come back with a comparison of FTEs to essentially quantify what the changes really looked like in terms of personnel and also discuss what I had proposed as a second position in addition to director of, uh, community, of city operations. I had also talked about a director of community services. And there was discussion as to whether or not we were essentially becoming too top-heavy in terms of management, adding positions. So what we did respond with, to the council's request, was a comparison of FTEs. I'm also prepared to talk about the, the community services. From a top-down view, the difference between what exists now and what I'm proposing is approximately 11 budgeted employees. I think what's important to note is that many of those actually are not as a result of the reorg. In fact, eight of those are EMS. I believe there is two that are, DCM, is that right? I'm sorry, two that are facilities maintenance. Because Acting Director Matino came to us with a really excellent plan to kind of plus up that department, which is budgeted for this year, to include some additional personnel. Because they, we really get a tremendous value out of the work that they do within City Hall and, and city facilities. So, 10 of the 11 are, are really just as a function of the, of the budget that was passed a few months ago. And then one is that Director of City Operations, which would be the new person overseeing both community maintenance and facilities. To drill down a little bit more, I actually mistakenly believed when I was looking at the existing organizational chart that city planning, engineering, and inspectional services sat under the DCM umbrella. And the reason for that is that's actually how things had been functioning for the last several years. What's interesting is that change was never made in ordinance, and that was actually never an official amendment to the organization of the city. In fact, it all fell under a Director of Community Services that after August of 2018, when the then Director of Community Services left, Dr. Z...
Dr. V.
Dr. V. I, I don't have all the history here. So I was at least at the right point in the alphabet, thank you. As opposed to, right. And not Dr. X, that's a comic book hero. But when he left and Tess Curran took over, she really took over as Director of Health and Human Services. And for whatever, I don't know how it actually happened, but there was sort of this general sense that inspectional services, city planning and engineering then fell under community maintenance, but no actual changes ever made. So, I think it's important to note that the community services director I was talking about was actually technically filled, but was not operating under that name. It's Tess Curran, Director of Health and Human Services. Community service is essentially is, is a grouping that doesn't really exist in that way anymore. So if you consider that on the FY22 chart, you have community services that includes three departments that weren't really operating under it and rather were really operating as if under community maintenance, under the then-director. The new iteration significantly pares down that department to just four divisions. Streets and highways, solid waste, parks, cemeteries and trees, under community maintenance. And then puts facilities as the other division under city operations. It shows that Health and Human Services is now its own department, which is really what it should be because it has a number of grant-funded and other similar type subdivisions underneath it. And what I think this would accomplish is that community maintenance being a significantly outward-facing department where we have people in the community doing important work that folks see, that they know about, that they really care about because it affects their lives and their commutes and their walks and everything else, becomes a smaller, much more manageable department. Director, the inspectional services becomes its own department, which is, really should be under statute. Glenn Hathaway, as the building inspector, really shouldn't be answering to sub-levels or other levels of, of hierarchy by state statute. And then finally, we would have the creation of a engineering and planning department overseen by our incredibly capable city engineer, Mr. Aguirre. And he would be overseeing both the planning and engineering as well as, as well as conservation, traffic and licensing. And the reason traffic and licensing would move into that department is we do see how the Director of Traffic is incredibly forward-looking in how she's thinking about where to put parking kiosks, how to develop a plan for traffic and for parking and for all these other things. And that really pairs so perfectly with what they're trying to do in engineering and planning. They're trying to develop a very thoughtful and intentional plan for the city. So that's why we would move traffic into that department. Licensing is essentially living in the planning department already. Is technically, I believe, under ordinance, part of the planning, so we would be keeping it there. Do you have any questions?
Councilor Deion.
I'm basically pretty good with this reorg. I do have one issue in terms of the Director of City Operations. Again, I know at the last meeting, we discussed the fact that originally that whoever that individual was gonna be would have been the Director of Facilities Maintenance and would have had additional duties as opposed to a new position.
Yep.
It evolved into a new position. It has nothing to do with that person being the Director of Facilities Maintenance.
Now it would, with this new version.
Okay, okay.
So I, I apologize for interrupting.
No, no, it's okay. No, that's good because...
So, so it, it, it seemed that a, a separate Director of Facilities Maintenance, if you create the Director of City Operations position, was unnecessary. It was, it was just too much, too much management. And we have the reality that Tammy Matino is essentially doing three jobs, right? Which is wildly unfair to her, to ask her to shoulder all of the responsibility that comes along with those. And I will say that where we would really like Tammy to be is the purchasing agent. The purchasing agent I, I really see as a gatekeeper and sort of a, you know, a vigilant watchperson for, you know, people not doing things the right way, trying to sidestep the bidding process, trying to do things inappropriately that would end up costing the city in reputation and possibly money. And she's done an amazing job with that. Now, what we don't have before us tonight is the sort of second piece, which is all salaries, right? So there's a number of positions that we're, we're asking the council to consider increasing the cap on those so that we can actually pay some of these people who are either working outside of ordinance, but almost more importantly, who would be moving into positions where they really should be paid commensurate with their experience and their job. That's not before us tonight, but that would be part and parcel with asking Ms. Matino to move out of the three jobs, go into a single job and actually get paid appropriately for it.
So what happens to the Director of Facility Maintenance position?
It is, so the Director of City Operations takes over as the Director of Facilities Maintenance. And the boots on the ground, if you will, would essentially be a project manager. So what I would foresee is, is there's a couple very capable tradespeople that are in facilities maintenance right now. One in particular, who I think would be sort of an excellent foreperson, a foreman, within facilities maintenance that would be executing the overall plan of the Director of City Operations.
We have the ability to do this with the existing ASME contract as well.
So that doesn't create a, a new position. It just, it basically changes the responsibilities within the ASME contract of one person, who would be a foreperson, that position already exists. It would be a foreperson in facilities maintenance. City Operations would oversee facilities maintenance and community maintenance. And then you, you would essentially no longer have a Director of Facilities Maintenance. You would have City Operations overseeing. It would be its own department, but it wouldn't have its own Director.
So there are some moving parts to this. And this, this is the first piece, as we address this through the reorg. And then we've got the salary and ordinances that we need to discuss. And then the, the last piece would be like we just mentioned, that the ASME contract allows us to do some of these things. That's where the reclass will, will fall into play, where we need to address some of the wages through that as well.
So the funding in the budget for the Director of Facilities Maintenance would make up at least the bulk of the salary for this individual?
Yes.
So we would no longer be creating two positions? We'd only be creating one? Or are we creating none and just giving additional duties?
We're, well, actually, Director McAlini can actually speak to the, the money.
And this is, this was submitted through ordinance, but this is probably a much cleaner version to look at.
So this is the other part of what was requested by the committee on the last date. And it shows the net increase. And it's, I would argue that it's, it's fairly negligible, certainly both in people and in money.
Yeah, and when you factor in, so if you look at the, the first page, where it says reorg financial overview, the top part is the major impacted departments by this. So anyone that would fall under Director of Operations or Director of City Operations, it would be an increase of one and a half employees. And then if you look at salaries down below, it technically is an increase. So if you look at the, the difference between 22 and 23, it's about $34,515. But that doesn't factor in the fact that our city engineer was only budgeted in FY22 at $90,700 and is now at $122. But if you look at Facilities Director, Facilities Project Manager, those are two positions that we're not funding. So there's, there's an offset there.
Because as it originally, well, I shouldn't say originally, the second time, I was definitely not prepared to agree to a Director of City Operations because technically speaking, you are the Director of City Administrations, of City Operations. Matter of fact, I had brought with me, I had gotten it off our website, of the duties, the responsibilities, et cetera. And everything you defined in terms of Director of City Operations fell under your purview and under your... and under your, and I'm not seeing you as a person, your position.
Yeah, sure.
So I was definitely not going to support that position once it changed. So now we have some more to think about. So what's the point? So this person is going to oversee, is going to be the director of facilities maintenance and oversee community maintenance?
Yes.
Basically.
And so the idea would be that within community maintenance, we have Charlie Denmeat, who since the departure of Mr. Perry has stepped up and done an exceptional job. The culture there is changing in a really positive way. They're doing really good work. People are being held accountable, but in a constructive way. So we're really pleased with what Mr. Denmeat has done, and I believe he would be a very capable, on the ground, you know, in front of his people, manager of community maintenance, either there on Lewis and Street or wherever their headquarters ends up in the future.
Okay. I'll yield for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Question?
Yep.
So, one question, one comment, and then I'll give you an opportunity to sell me on a vote. So overall, I don't necessarily have an issue with the org chart, with the exception of CDA. So you know my feelings about CDA.
I do.
So I only support the org chart if CDA falls underneath the city administrator. So I think when we look at the position of the community development director, it's not a political position.
I would agree.
The city administrator should be the continuity for local government. So having it above the city administrator, to me, just doesn't work. I think the city administrator should have oversight of somebody in community development. And quite frankly, when we talked about this before, you know, the CDA director oftentimes is the planner in all the communities, so it is very much an operational department, right? Not a political department. I can appreciate the chief of staff being obviously a line item. I would just like to see that just kind of moved down, even if it's an offshoot under the city administrator, because I think there needs to be, again, and if you don't want to put it in line with the other departments, because I know it's got a separate budget, I think it just needs to be removed one step down from where it currently exists.
Okay.
That's really my only gripe with this organizational flowchart. The other question is just in terms of the new position that you're creating, city operations and the director of city ops, do you currently, as it's laid out now, do you currently feel like you could truly fill this position? And I know there might be somebody in mind now, but if there wasn't an individual in place, would we still be able to advertise this successfully for somebody to come in and actually fill that role?
I think we could. And, you know, for me, you know, the ideal candidate is somebody that has facilities experience, has public works experience, and, you know, also has leadership experience, right? So those three things together are not necessarily easy to find, but I think there's folks out there that have, you know, kind of bumped around in different environments and been able to get the experience in those different environments, which I think we'd all agree are distinctly different. I mean, you know, the idea of maintaining facilities is a very different animal than going out and making sure the roads and sidewalks are right or that we're enforcing all of our trash regulations to ensure that our recycling is as clean as it can be. You know, those require three pretty distinctly different, you know, areas of knowledge and expertise. That said, I think there's probably, I think there's people out there that would be able to do this. And even if somebody is not as strong in one of those, I mean, I would certainly want, you know, someone who's at least a very effective and experienced manager and a lot of experience in one or the other, of those other things. There are some very strong people within DCM and throughout the city that I think could also support that person.
And manage the workload.
And manage the workload.
Okay. Counsel Washington.
I just want to support what you say. I absolutely am going to hop on that and say that I definitely think the city administrator and the CDA need to be swapped before I could agree to this either. I think that's a hundred percent right on that. I think that that just doesn't make sense, so I yield.
Counsel Deion.
Yeah, and the only other comment, I guess, that I would make is that, you know, based on this chart, it doesn't demonstrate that those two positions are one.
Which, which two positions?
The director of city operations and the director of facilities maintenance.
So on the org chart, I listed, we listed title underneath the actual department. So under facilities, it'll say director of city ops. Everywhere else, there's a name because those positions are already filled, but it's the exact same title, so that's the same person.
It's incredibly small. I can't see it. I'm doing this from memory.
Yeah, I just put my glasses on.
So it'll be that second line down, under city ops.
So it says facilities director, city ops, and then FTE.
So essentially, this chart would, so actually, it sort of should be director of city ops slash facilities maintenance, and everything else should fall under it in a straight column as opposed to breaking it out. I don't want to open the door for a second position popping out of this down the road.
Sure.
I don't want to open that door at all because I don't agree with it.
It's a fair argument, and I get it. But hear me out on why they should be parallel as opposed to in line. Within community maintenance, there, you know, you have a division head, which is Charlie Denmeat. And under community maintenance, there are several other subdivisions that, one, are co-located already or already have a relationship. And even when you see that there's a half a person attributed to DCM, it's because they actually, two departments, two departments within DCM share a person, so it ends up being a half and a half for these purposes. So they are very intertwined, right? And you have a division head, you have Charlie Denmeat. Whereas with facilities, it would be a foreperson that doesn't really, is not going to create, he's not going to create a budget. That person is not going to make, you know, management and personnel decisions. The city operations director would do that.
But yet, he's supposed to be the facilities maintenance director.
That's what I'm saying. So the director of city operations would make sort of executive decisions for facilities maintenance, but that's an entirely different staff, it's an entirely different location, it's an entirely different group of resources. So I do think they should be parallel and separate as opposed to all in line with one another. I mean, I think it's probably semantics at the end of the day, but I understand what you're saying. I just, I do think they're quite distinct.
It's similar to community utilities.
Right.
Yeah.
That's right.
So where you've got community utilities, you've got the water administration, so you've got a director, and then for sewer, it's still Paul Ferland, but he's also serving as the community utilities, you know, director of community utilities.
Yeah, so within sewer, he has a whole staff, but none of them are making the high-level executive decisions that he's making, both as director of community utilities and director of the sewer department.
I see what you're saying in that, except that he's listed as community utilities, director of community utilities, and then under sewer is still the director of community utilities. I'm not seeing that.
That's, I believe that's the same way it is under city operations and facilities, though. It's still director of city ops, director of city ops.
They've identified the same person. They just don't have a name, is what they're saying.
As long as we're not opening that door.
I don't think we, without your permission, there's no way I can create a new position. And so...
Because it makes sense otherwise. It does, I will truly say. And I agreed with it way back when, when it was going to be one person serving two functions. It was when it all of a sudden changed, that's when you lost me completely. But no, otherwise, it does make sense. I mean, we're utilizing money in the budget for that position. It's not going to, it's not an additional $130,000 out of the taxpayers' pocket to create a position, or somebody, a position for somebody who's going to carry the same responsibilities that somebody's already being paid.
Sure.
And that was my concern.
Yep.
So with that, I yield.
Okay. So with that, not seeing any other questions, so is the administration amenable to coming down with an amendment to just change the CDA?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'd have to verify that with the mayor.
Right, so we would table it, and then hope, I know you've got the salaries that we want to get on the next ordinance, so we'll get another meeting rather quickly and just...
Great, okay.
And point of information, I believe we also did request some job descriptions to go along with some of the reorg.
I believe we might have with the director of operations, but I got to, actually, is it in this, might be in this amendment.
That wouldn't be in the original packet.
There was a description at some point, but I don't know if it was sent down in the most recent package. Let me see if I can find that, and I'll make sure you get it if you don't already have it somewhere.
Is the director of operations in particular, is that we looking for?
Right, right.
Because there is no other. There was a, there was a city operations or community services that I didn't think existed. As it turns out, it did.
Right.
But it was just sort of this, it almost changed by habit.
The fall.
Yeah, like almost by custom. It was really strange, as of 18. But we just, we need to know where everything is and put it in its right spot.
Yep, okay.
So I do want to thank you folks. I know, I know we kind of went back and forth a lot on this, but the information that you did provide, this is very helpful. The change with the org chart was helpful as well, so I appreciate the work. With that, is there a motion to table?
I would make the motion to table.
Motion was made by Counsel Deion, second by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote, a motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Nick.
Item number nine is a resolution to discuss the establishment of ordinance to require city council approval for any stipend exceeding $2,000 that was tabled on March 1, 2022.
Motion to raise from the table.
Motion to list was made by Counsel Deion, second by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote, a motion carries. I'll turn it over to Corporation Counsel.
All right, in essence, stipends, just so you know, by definition, they are, you know, they are not appropriate for work within an employee's job description. I think this comes up because sometimes it's a suggestion by the city council, many times probably appropriately, that the administration, not this administration, past administration, that gave out stipends that were for work that it's already within their job description. So I completely understand the concern of the city council, but I do think that the stipends can be awarded by the executive branch. It's an executive function as long as it's within, an amount within the budgeted appropriation. So it cannot exceed the budget appropriation, but other than that, I believe it's an executive function, so that an ordinance that would somehow limit that would be invalid. And if you think about it, you know, if stipends are awarded appropriately, you would imagine that they would often be in an emergency-type situations where somebody has to step up, and it'd have to be a timely situation, and they wouldn't even have the time to come down to city council and ask for permission to give a certain person a stipend for something outside their work area. So this is something that, it's not the first time it's come up. I found in the files from May 7 of 2019, former Corporation Counsel Judge Macy rendered a similar opinion. I was asked to look at it December 29 of 2020. I resubmitted Judge Macy's memo, and I said I supported it. I looked at it independently. I did my own research, and I came to the same conclusion. I was asked again in April of this year, and nothing's changed. I mean, I think it's an executive function.
Discussion.
Yeah, I do. I just have a question.
Counsel Washington.
Yeah, I just came up with a $2,000 cap. Was that was...
That was the committee we were throwing out numbers in terms of really trying to figure out what would come down so there was, be some flexibility for the administration. So really, 2,000 is arbitrary. So, you know, the reason, the reason behind, and I spoke with Corporation Counsel, is that, you know, obviously, we're trying, you know, there's a lot of, and I appreciate what he's saying with regard to it being an executive branch, and we've got to kind of walk that line and make sure we're not overstepping. But unfortunately, we've had prior administrations who have tried to circumvent ordinance and salary caps and things of that nature by issuing stipends. So it really was drafted in response to that. Like, how do we provide a safety net to ensure that doesn't take place? And it could very well be that we have to, you know, have faith and trust in the administration, and the next time we see it, we call it out through a resolution, or we put it in an ordinance, you know, even if it's contrary to what, you know, Corporation Counsel is saying, if we want to put a limit in there. You know, our concern obviously was, he's not talking about, you know, the snow stipend. You know, that comes out of snow and ice, which is, can be legally deficit spent, right? So that's one that was kind of creating some concern. But I don't disagree with, you know, Corporation Counsel. It's got, number one, it's got to be in the budget. You can't overspend. So if you've got an appropriation in the budget, and it should only be truly used for emergency purposes or somebody filling a temporary role, it's just unfortunately, we haven't seen it used that way in the past, right? So I think if you go to other communities, we wouldn't be having these conversations, but forever likes to be somewhat unique, so.
I yield.
Okay. Counsel Deion, do you have your hand up?
No.
No.
So, listen, I'm okay with doing a grant leave-to-withdraw. I will say that the next time I do see it, though, it's, I think we're going to be back to the same situation if it's, you know, if it's used in a way that we feel like it's just circumventing.
Possibly, but at the same time, if it's brought to my attention and I, in agreement with the city council, then there are actions that my office can take to rectify the situation as well.
Okay. So I think that's important, right? Because I don't think we had that support in the past either, so I think that it's all, it's all telling. So if there's no discussion, is...
I'll make the motion, grant leave-to-withdraw.
Second.
Motion, grant leave-to-withdraw, was made by Counsel Deion, second by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote, a motion carries unanimously. Item number 10 is a resolution to discuss the establishment of an ordinance requiring that all collective bargaining agreements include cost analysis. This was tabled on March 1, 2022. Is there a motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift from the table.
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Deion, second by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote, a motion carries unanimously. Corporation Counsel?
Okay, so the cost analysis request for CBA appropriation. Now, the executive branch is by Chapter 150E, Section 7. I mean, they are, they're permitted to enter into CBAs. And there's the requirement that the executive branch, it's controlled by Section 7B, and it's pretty vague. I mean, it basically says that it has to be submitted to the city council, a request for appropriation. Now, you know, this is, once again, I like to at least identify, it's not black and white, there's a little bit of a gray area here. When you have a state statute that tells the executive branch what they have to do, you know, is the city council permitted to have an ordinance that has additional requirements? And the answer is, it's possible, but I think it's, when you have these gray areas, I think the better solution here is, you know, we look at it two ways. The city council for CBAs, they're not really permitted to substitute their own judgment for the judgment administration. I mean, that's an executive function, function entered into the CBAs. It's 100% a legislative action is to appropriate it. So the question is whether or not there's money to fund it. They can't say, I would have done this, I would have done that. The question is, is there money to fund it? So much, if not all, the information that this proposed ordinance is requesting is completely relevant and would make sense if the city council has. But rather than make an ordinance that could possibly call into question its validity, my suggestion would be to have a resolution that says we're requesting, you know, the exact same information to be submitted along with the budget. I think what's happened this year, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you request the information, and I believe Mr. Aiken or somebody in the administration provided it to the city council, so it's very easily done. But I would remind you, aside from, you know, the fact that you can have a resolution requesting the information rather than demanding it, there's also the charter, Chapter 2, Section 7 of the charter, you know, the legislative branch always has access to information. You know, it doesn't have to be in conjunction with the CBA. They always have the access to information from the administration. So as I said, I think that the best way is a resolution, and, you know, if the city council is not getting the information that they need to make their decisions, then they can take whatever steps necessary, including, I guess, denying appropriating it. I would avoid just any kind of suggestion that the city council is requesting this information to then second guess whether it's a good CBA or not.
Yeah. So I'll just, I'll just speak to it because I was the counsel that filed the resolution. So I'm comfortable with doing a grant leave-to-withdraw because I think the administration has submitted the proper information that was required. I think part of the problem was that, you know, it was, two factors, I think, or two prongs here. One was that I think for a long time, contracts weren't coming down for council approval. So when they did start coming down, I think it was kind of, you know, the council was unsure of what their role and responsibility was. So I think we've highlighted the fact that it is truly about an appropriation and understanding what the funding mechanism is behind it and the total cost of the contract, because once we fund it one year, we've got to fund it the entire amount. So again, because of that and the information that we are providing and that the council is aware that it's a funding mechanism, I think everybody is now educated for it. So I think if there is any issues going forward and we're not receiving the information, because in the past, it was just an MOU, right? And we were just approving an MOU. There was no financial impacts, you know, and talking to Corporation Counsel, you can have language change that has financial impacts, and we wouldn't know that. You know, we would need to get that calculation from the administration. So based on that, I'm comfortable with a grant leave-to-withdraw on this, so. If there's a motion.
I'll make the motion, grant leave-to-withdraw.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counsel Deion, second by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote, a motion carries unanimously. Unanimously. Unanimously, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned was made by Counsel Dion, second by Counsel Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voter, motion carries. The committee is now adjourned.